Five twenty-one nineteen for seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars and forty cents and approve a payroll warrant for five twenty-two nineteen for one hundred and sixty-three thousand, five hundred and fourteen dollars and five cents.
You have that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then, um, we have, I would like a motion also, um, to approve the bylaw committee minutes of one thirty nineteen and five fourteen nineteen.
You have that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Six thirty-three.
Six thirty-three, we have to wait two more minutes.
Well, I can take a minute if we would like. So Barbara Clancy and I attended a CMRPC elderly housing, um, grant request or grant discussion and the town of Brookfield and Brookfields have, were awarded a ten thousand dollars study grant for direct technical assistance to look at elderly housing in the region.
Ten thousand dollars?
Ten thousand dollars. And if we have a minute more, I'll hit another one. So, uh, received an email from Angobi's office today that the representatives of ecological restoration will be visiting the town of Brookfield to look at Rice Corner Road and the runoff issues at Rice Corner Road. And Cindy has been contacted by, um, the strap grant folks and they're suggesting that we drop Molasses Hill off the strap grant that we had put in the last time that we didn't get and focus on Rice Quarter and Gay Road for runoff.
I think that we should.
And so that's how that hopefully wants to go down so that we can take care of both. And ecological restoration has the opportunity to write grants should, uh, that work out. And now that should be six thirty-five and it is.
And it is, outstanding.
All right, I'd like to open a hearing for Oak Home Brewing Company's application for a farmer's series pouring permit and entertainment license. Anna, I don't know if anybody is here from Oak Home?
They are.
Oh. If you'd like to come up and join us and maybe explain a little bit about what you're doing.
Yeah, well, uh, so it's a motion to-
It's a motion to accept the application. And once we accept the application, then, um, we have to send it into the ABCC to get approval.
Right, and are we going to cover the entertainment as a part of this or as a separate motion?
Yes, we're gonna, yes, we're gonna do that together.
All right, so we'll do, do both of them together.
So, do we want them to come up at all and discuss it?
I'd like to know how they're doing.
Yeah, I would too, come on up.
I'm doing first.
Yeah. We hear lots of exciting things, so this is a great opportunity to hear more.
Uh, last, last year, we opened, uh, right after the, uh-
Excuse me, would you like to introduce yourself so we know who you are?
I'm Richard Perdella, I'm, uh, I'm not a, I'm not a resident of the farm, actually, uh-
I am Chris Perdella.
He's the owner of the farm.
I'm Andrew Woodward.
Andrew is gonna be the brewer for the brewery and one of the co-owners. Uh, Chris is, uh, not a co-owner, I'm the third co-owner. So there's three of us that are actually owning and managing the brewery.
Okay.
Um, so, just to speak about the farm a little bit, because I'm so proud of how it's going, is, uh, we've had, um, five weddings so far and, um, we already had to, uh, expand the parking lot a little bit just to make sure that we've got enough, uh, coverage for all the cars that are there, but, uh, so far, uh, we've had very good reviews from all of the weddings that have been there.
Christmas trees went very well. And went from seventy-five trees last year when the Jeffsons owned it to about three hundred and eighty this year.
Wow, that's good.
So, um, we planted three thousand more.
Wow.
It's a seven to ten year process also.
Yeah.
We're gonna have to buy in, obviously. Um, we plan to do pumpkins in the future. Uh, raspberries are currently there, we planted, uh, three hundred blueberry bushels to, to kinda get their process going a little bit better, um, so.
Great.
We're going, yeah.
Animals?
Animals, um, my wife has horses there, she's got three horses, um, we got chickens right now, pigs on the way, we're gonna do a couple of cows as well this year.
That's great.
Start small.
That's great, that's nice to hear that, that the property's being used, uh, you know, like that again. And I'm so happy that somebody bought it.
Yes.
Oh yeah, okay.
So did Kenny hook you into the tractor parade?
Yes, he did.
All right.
Oh yeah, he hooked me. He made me build a trailer and everything.
Yeah, with a brady trailer.
Yeah, I heard that, yeah, yeah.
Excellent.
We're happy to do it, whenever, anytime you guys need a tractor or trailer, just let us know.
Thank you.
We, we, we'll wanna help out, so.
So to the official business.
Yeah, to the official business. Okay, so I would like to have a motion to entertain, um, the application for the pouring, for the, uh, the pouring permit and the entertainment license.
You have that motion?
Second.
Any other discussion from anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So now that this is accepted, we will, uh, send it down to the, uh, ABCC for, for approval from them. And I don't think that there is anything here to sign from us at all, so we're just-
His hours are there, but two minutes-
And your hours here.
I have, I have a question on that.
Sure.
We're, we're starting off with these hours because we're not really sure how busy we're gonna be. And if we have to adjust those, how do we, like, it's, so Wednesday, if, if we're really busy on Thursday and we wanna slow it down a little bit on the Thursday and we wanna open like on Wednesday, um, is there a way we can adjust those?
Probably.
They have to let our office know and-
Yeah, you'd have to let the office know.
Okay.
Yeah, and then she, and then Karen has to let the ABCC know about that.
Okay, great.
Super, thank you.
Super, welcome, welcome to town and I hope we see good success with the business.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are you gonna be doing any stouts and quarters?
I, I, no, I do everything, I do everything. I actually have a milk stuff that everybody loves, um, sours and, like, I'm just dabbling in farmhouse beers now, farmhouse sales and stuff.
Oh, good, you're here.
Basic recommendations, so, you know, my goal is to be able to use like the microflora from outside and spontaneously ferment a beer, you know, based off the pollen and everything in the air.
Nice.
Um, which are big hits nowadays too, so for farm breweries, it's nice to have like that natural setting to use, uh, to be able to get those different flavors and stuff, so. It should be, should be a lot of fun, so, excited.
Great, oh, that's great.
Lots of them for everybody there.
Sounds like a plan.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Do you guys need? Is the entertainment, is that part of it?
Yes, the entertainment's part of that.
Great, thank you. Thank you guys. This is a nice weekend.
Now Eric ducked out for a minute, so we wanna-
Well, we said seven.
Seven, okay, all right. All right, so why don't we take a couple of things out of order? So we'll do the vacation carryover.
Yep.
Okay, um, this, it's for Al Jones, he wants to take the last four days of his vacation in, um, twenty nineteen during the month of July.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that's done. All righty. Uh, now we have another one here from the CMRPC, it's an invoice for the, for twenty eighteen and, um, it's in the amount of five hundred and fifty-nine dollars and thirteen cents, I would like a motion for the selectmen to approve this.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, while we have a minute or two, um, in the case of CMRPC, that there will be a meeting on the thirtieth related to the Finney property. Mass Development, uh, will actually be in attendance.
No, what, what is that?
The thirtieth, at two P M. That, we just got an email earlier this afternoon.
That's, is that Thursday?
Yes, I think so. No, it's possible it is.
All right, do you have anything more to bring up before? I mean, I do have correspondence, but I thought we would wait and-
We could ask him if he can take him early.
No, we can take Eric early.
Sure.
Eric?
Yeah.
Oh, we're gonna take, we'll take you, why, Don, did you have something?
Well, I was just, we wanted to talk about the town meeting.
But, yeah, we're gonna take it afterwards. We're gonna have Eric, you wanna come up, please?
Sure. Should I sign in or not?
Yes.
Please.
Yes, please. Good evening.
I'm Eric, I'm from the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission.
Yep. Clarence.
Hi Eric, how are you? Okay, Eric is going to explain to us, uh, this is the regional municipal accounting service agreement, it's a two-year agreement by and between the Pioneer Valley Commission and the town of Brookfield. And so he's-
Let me answer a few questions, which are probably on people that-
Yes, that's what I was just gonna say, if you could explain it and answer some questions.
Yeah.
No, she'd take that, sure. If you would.
Sure. Get my good side.
There we go.
All right. So the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission serves the region, which is Hampshire and Hampden Counties, but we have strong relationships with our sister agencies, um, in this case it would be the Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Agency, which is in Worcester, and we work closely with them. Connor and I talk, and we talk to, our directors talk to each other and all that. And I guess the, the initial inquiry was made to them about whether there could be help.
Yeah.
And then Connor sent me an email saying, can you guys help? And we have relationships with other towns in Worcester County, we have some relationships with towns in Franklin County, um, in particular Warren, it's a town that we're working with directly now, I was there yesterday, um, because we're working on a regional animal shelter with a group of towns there, um, and we've done their C D B G, of course, housing work for them, and I know we've done some work here on that as well. So if anybody's worried at all about whether the cross-jurisdictional nature of this is a problem, it's not, it's perfectly legal and everything else, then let me, let me answer the second question, which is that the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, Commission has a regional IT, uh, regional accounting program. And what that really means is that we've done the bidding, we did all the work ahead of time, it's like using a state bid or something like that, it's as if the town bidded itself. So we put out a bid that said we need the following sets of services provided for the communities that are participating in this. And so far the towns of Blanford, Chesterfield, and Gosham, um, and Worthington are all using the program in our region. So, when I got the call from Linda saying, you know, can you help us, the answer is yes, we have a program in place, we have a bid in place, and we have a vendor in place that you can use. So all of those things have been provided for two years, so, um, in that sense, we try to make it as easy as possible, and all of that, again, is perfectly legal as long as the bidding process is done correctly, which it was. A number of the people at, um, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, including my boss, are N C P P O certified, so everything is signed up, we have a chief officer, you know, for purchase, chief purchasing officer to make, confirm everything. So, the agreement that I sent you, um, for this is the relationship that will exist between the town of Brookfield and the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, and it states, part of it states the, um, fees that Eric Kinsher will provide to the town for the services that he's providing. And part of it is, and it's a very minimal part of it, well, we're, um, I have an extra copy, if you've got it on your phone, all right, yeah, I do have it on my phone. Um, so, and then the small part of it is, um, the fees that we get for just managing the program. And we are a agency, we're a nonprofit, we're, the basic thing to say in positioning municipalities, we don't, um, we're not in this to make money, we're in this to provide the services to the communities, so any of the fees that you see attached to any of our programs are covered by time or our, our business manager coming time to make sure that all the billing is done properly, everything's passed as snug when the auditors come through, if the states wanna look at our bidding records, we have all those things in place. So all of that is really just to make sure the management of the program is done properly. As I understand things, um, because we've met, we've talked and we've met, um, and I've met with Eric Kinsher now twice, um, there were two distinct parts to this, one of, one of which was cleaning up what had been become difficult for the town because of the situation the town was in with its own accounting, which I won't go into here, it's not my place to go into it. Um, and the other part of it was to provide ongoing services once, not once, but ongoing services as well as straightening that out. And so there were two prices quoted by Mr. Kinsher under the bid specifications, and one was fifty thousand dollars to do all the straightening out, and the other one for the long-term service was forty thousand. Um, the cleanup is hours spent, I know he's already been here, there's already things that have occurred-
Oh, yes.
-in terms of starting to straighten things out. I have gotten nothing but rave reviews from the towns that use his services, um, in terms of how the quality of service, the responsiveness of service, the, uh, the detail that he goes to, he's, he's kind of a nerd when it comes to accounting and he enjoys being that, so that's a good thing, that's what you want from somebody like that. And he's fully willing to admit to that as well, and he's a fun guy to be around, he's a good personality.
He is, he's a nice guy.
Um, so, um, I, we feel good that we're offering the service to communities, we're perfectly happy to welcome Brookfield into this program. Um, and so, the way that I wrote the agreement, and hopefully I got the language right, you can certainly have your own town council review, I don't know if you use K P Law or somebody else, but-
Yeah.
It's been reviewed by the town councils, but I know it's in your best interest to do that, so I assure you it's been through all of you.
Yes.
Um, I tried to write the language inside the agreement with the town to, um, convey the fact that there was gonna be a phase one and two, which was all about cleanup and straightening things out, and that phase three was all about, um, the ongoing services you'd get, so you can look at that in terms of months and timelines. The first few months, not only are you gonna get ongoing services, which is gonna be a lot of cleanup, eventually the cleanup will be done and it'll be just ongoing services. Um, the towns that are in the program by and large are a little bit smaller than you, you're allowed to ask me what they pay for annual fees, it's anywhere from twenty-eight to thirty thousand dollars, so this is consistent, the forty thousand is consistent with after the size of the town, amount of activity that will be required. Um, I thought we had a really beneficial meeting the other day in which we went over a lot of this.
Yes, we did.
I urged the board to, to become part of our program, I'm happy to come back out here. I happen to live in Belchertown, so it's really not a big trip for me to come visit you guys anyway, um, so I'm, I'm not really worried about that. Um, the scope of services is attached to the, uh, the agreement so that all the things that, um, Mr. Kinsher has said he would do are in there, so I put in all the language, he has seen it and has okayed it, I need, the board needs to take a second look at it or whatever, take a look at it and make sure it's okay.
Okay.
The other thing is that, um, in terms of managing and reviewing Mr. Kinsher, it just so happened that the day before he was here, he and I did his annual review under the contract provisions. So he was actually in the Springfield area, the day before, we spent a couple hours together reviewing all the details of the contract and services provided to the towns that he already had, and it went very well, but it's our obligation and due diligence to do that. Um, and then the day after was the day that we met here. Um, so, um, the other thing that I asked him to do in terms of his phase one, phase two, phase three, is as far as our bookkeeping goes, he had to spell out more detail in terms of that so we could keep track of what he was doing and make sure that there were milestones that could be hit. So, my plan going forward, once this is all in place, is for the town to stay in touch with me directly, and him to stay in touch with me directly so we can monitor everything that's going on for you. If you need me out here on any given day or any given evening to have a further discussion, I'm happy to do it. Um, I look forward to this being beneficial to both the town and the, and the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission and Mr. Kinsher. And I think in closing, what I would say is that, and you witnessed this as a board, and your finance committee has witnessed this and others in town, that managing small town government is a full-time business and requires different types of specific expertise. And we, part of the reason we created this program is that we have found in the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission that it is, jobs like this, a municipal accountant does things a whole lot different than a private sector accountant.
Yes.
There are very specific rules at the state level that have to be followed, and you can't deviate from those at all. And when you submit things, your different schedules and all the information that needs to be submitted to the state, it has to be done a certain way, so you get your free cash certified and all the other things your town needs to do, your, your stabilization fund, um, your free cash certified, your stabilization amounts certified, all the things that are part of conducting the business of the town. And therefore to have somebody, you know, twenty years ago or thirty years ago, you could have somebody who was skilled with numbers and coming into it, and now it's even more and more specific training than that you've done. That's just the reality of where we're at, not to mention the software platforms that he can provide that allow you to link to the state even more efficiently and things like that. So, it is becoming a specialized service, offering it this way in a regional format with specialized skill sets on the part of that person, I think is a good way to go. I think it's good for the smaller towns, you know, you're not, you're not a bigger town, you're a smaller town, and it allows you that flexibility of working with somebody who can provide the information you need, so. It's our pleasure to help, it's, uh, I hope the board signs the agreement, I know you're already starting to move ahead, so.
Yeah, I know Laurie, Laurie who works for Eric, she's been in, this is her second week in, and she's been in, planning on coming in like two days a week.
Yeah.
And she's already been in contact with, uh, Mary Jane Hand from the Department of Revenue.
Yeah.
And Eric has already been in contact with her too.
There's two Eric's, that's Eric Kinsher.
Yeah, the, yeah, that's what I meant, the other Eric's been in con, and she, and Mary Jane very highly recommends him, that's when I had first called her and told her we were having problems, she mentioned Eric right off.
Yeah.
That we should get him.
Yes.
So, so far from what I've seen, I've been very happy with it.
Good, good, because he's, he's trying, he's trying to, whatever, win your guys' heart, says it where, has it worked to help you out and make sure that this goes the way it's supposed to go. And I think, you know, six months to a year from now, you'd be able to look back and say this is all working the way it's supposed to work, which is a good thing for the town, because you don't wanna be in jeopardy in any other way, so.
Okay, any questions?
Maybe, um, no, I, I had reviewed the agreement before and I just reviewed it again while, uh, Eric was speaking. Uh, did that, do you know, did the advisory committee get enough opportunity to, um-
No, I don't.
Understand what the scope of the agreement is?
Well, we had, yeah, we had, I had sent them originally, I sent to Steve and Jeff.
Project-
Oh, yes, they do have a, I'm sorry, they do have a scope of service. They do have the scope, because I sent it to them, yes, I had, yes, I sent it to them.
Did you have, did you have any questions about the scope of services, Jeff?
Yeah, I mean, it was okay, I mean, I, I just wanted to, I was hopeful the county would be here so we could ask some specific things, but I mean, since you're sort of the interface, that's, that's why I'm also, we're happy with your presentation, you know, again, I haven't been able to judge the fees or anything else, but, um, you know.
We can bar fees as low as we possibly can.
I, I, I'm sure you, I'm, yeah, maybe you do.
We're an agency, we're, we're a tenancy, it's not a tenancy of service for the communities we serve, though. So as you move through the process, um, Eric and his and Eric Kinsher, they staff will be available for questions.
Uh, pro, just provision that town council will do.
Yeah.
We're, we're still working on that.
Okay, so that's fine, sorry.
Yeah, it's, I'm happy to, to, to meet you and, and, uh, understand the process, it was a little, little vague until we saw the contract and then meet your personal ones.
Yeah, and then, um, just so the, uh, people in the room know, I have close to thirty-five years of municipal experience working for municipal powers down in Ourby, um, and I had the lucky task of being the chairman of the Dublin County School for many, for these years, so I've had budgets blown up, dropped on the town meeting floor, passed on town meeting floor, so I would get the process, some days it works really good along, and some days you have challenges you have to face, so, I get it. Maybe it's I feel your opinions are relevant, but I do get it, so.
Well, you make a little confusion, but other than that, yeah, you know, we're, we're pushing ahead.
Yeah.
Well, the reality is, without this kind of service, small towns will, will suffer.
Yes.
And the reality is, we fell into the trap as to train the capable financial resources that know municipal. What we have now is the opportunity to have that trained and capable resource in place so that there's no question, and that there, there will always be a backup. So we trust in you-
I appreciate it.
-to keep the ball rolling.
Yes. And what, and what's nice now with, um, Laurie who was with us, she also does the town of Holland, so she's very familiar with the school systems, you know, how, how they, because we're not regionalized, so she understands all about that, the contacts, and she knows them all at the schools, so that's another plus for us also.
Absolutely. So I'd make a motion that we approve the contract subject to K P review.
I'll second that.
All in, any questions, Don?
Just a quick question, um, is this, uh, require a town meeting vote as a funding?
No.
It's all funded, no, no issues, no problems.
So, so the, from a funding perspective, we'll, we'll need to reassign the remaining accountant, uh, wages as well as the, the annual audit funds, um, which the, the way that that's structured would allow for reconciliation to, to be in lieu of the audit.
Awesome.
Um, and then from a standpoint of next year, a discussion that I had, uh, mentioned with, with, uh, Mr. Gillis is that we need to change the accounting, uh, wages line to indicate accounting wages or services, and in essence it'll fall within our, our current budget constraints.
Great, thanks.
Okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
That was easy. Doesn't happen often, so.
So you want to-
So, like I said, the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission does appreciate, um, working with the town. I mean, we've been in place for over fifty years, working with communities in our region, and like I said, I've worked in the U S for a long time, so.
And we have, before you got here, I, I explained that, uh, we were at CMRPC the other evening-
How were you?
-for direct technical assistance on elderly housing.
Yeah.
And we were awarded that ten thousand dollars.
I, I manage our G L T program for the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission.
Excellent.
Thank you so much.
I think so. Does he wanna take the sign one back?
You need to hold on to it until it's reviewed.
No, but Chief Karen, you have a copy of this, right, to send it to?
You need to hold on to it until it's reviewed completely.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, they'll get it off to him, okay.
Then we'll just mail it.
I'm just scanning, I'll just scan it.
So, yeah, scan it, send it.
And I guess I did, the social services have the contract with it, I think, or it was a separate email, but they obviously-
Yeah, yeah, that's exactly right.
Thank you for the time.
Okay.
Did the board need me for anything else tonight?
I don't think so.
I think it's time to-
Will it need you for a drive, a moment?
Yes.
Well, thank you very much, Eric, for helping us out with this service.
It's a pleasure, it's a pleasure to work with the town.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
You too, thank you.
Keep the wheels on the bus.
Do we wanna do, um, hmm, okay, next on the agenda, next on the agenda, we're having a joint meeting with the advisory board, and we are gonna review the articles and open and close this, uh, special town meeting and the annual town meeting.
Let's do it.
Let's do it.
You wanna sit over here, Steve?
Hello?
Oh, yeah. What I would like to start off with though first, before we get into it, um, we talked at the last meeting, I think it was a meeting before, about not having, a lot of the towns were not having the special town meetings anymore, and, um, all we have is one article to put on. And so we, I talked to Michelle Rendazo from K P Law, and she said, if we put everything on the annual, you have to wait until the annual is concluded before the appropriations or other authorizations take effect. She said, those articles planned for a special town meeting, if it goes two nights or more, voted on the initial or subsequent nights, may not be effective until town meeting is finally concluded. So I think with, with the snow and ice deficit, we can wait for that.
Yeah, I don't see why we couldn't.
Yeah, and I think that's how, that's how she explained it, so, you know, if things, you know, as long as they're probably taken care of by the end of the year.
Yeah.
Because I think it's much easier to just include it all in one than to have a special. And what we'll be doing this year, we usually have the special at 6:30, but we are going to start the annual town meeting at 6:30 instead. And then we'll probably want Karen to post another joint meeting with the, joint meeting with the selectmen and the advisory board also that evening for 6:00 P.M.
That's already set.
It's all set, okay. All right. So I'd like to open the warrant again.
That's on the 14th. Are you also going to keep the 21 at 7:00 P.M. on the 6:21?
If we don't get through everything, we probably should keep it, yeah.
Get the two dates and cancel it if you get done.
Can you maybe see if we can start that at 6:30 also, instead of 7:00?
I don't know, school, I already, I don't want to really, I could ask them, but.
Ask.
Ask, it doesn't hurt.
Ask, it doesn't hurt. All right. So we'd like to open the warrant again here, and I have something that.
Can we talk logistics just for a second?
Okay, sure, sure.
So, so speaking of the two meetings.
Yeah.
Let's forge ahead, but if it gets to be like 9:30, let's have an agreement that we, because we have the second night.
Yes.
And we just don't wear people out.
Oh.
So I, I would say that, at least from, with the moderator here, that at least at some point, 9:00, 9:30, if we see that it's going to go long, that we call it and move, make a motion to move to the 21st.
I think that, that's a good, that's a good time. Do you agree with that, Don?
Sure.
Sure, I think that's a good move.
Good, thank you.
Okay, so we're going to reopen?
So I'll make a motion to reopen the warrant?
Yep.
Aye.
And I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, we have a note here from the Water Department to take off, remove Article 16.
The placeholder.
Okay, the, you had a placeholder on that.
Yeah, I just, just not in there, I just give you the, the Article 16 draft, and you have it in there.
All right, so.
Remove Article 16, say it.
It was, it was the original Article 16, it's not in, it's taken off of this.
It's already out of there.
Yeah, it's already off, okay. All right. So our first article here is, this would, it's for, we have a deficit in snow and ice, and it's $36,358, and that would come from free cash. And so I'd like a motion to approve.
So, so, I'll second it for discussion, but first of all, we need to change the verbiage to raise appropriate transfer or borrow and not mention free cash, because we probably won't have it.
Oh, oh, yes, Karen.
Yeah, well, that's how they sent it to me, but we'll.
Okay, should we probably take it from stabilization?
Right, well, right, but the best way to do it is just use the generic verbiage.
Yeah, okay.
So we'll raise appropriate transfer or borrow, and then some amount, some money to snow and ice account, and then we can delineate the account in the motion.
Okay, well, I didn't even think when I saw the free cash, so that, that was a mistake on my part.
She had last year, so.
Okay, so.
Is, is, is this the 16, fiscal year 16?
No, this is FY 19. FY 19, snow and ice.
We're looking at 16 on this.
On this one, this says 19.
Okay.
You, you probably got.
Say again?
Are you looking at the new one?
No.
Oh, yeah.
We received our meeting the other day.
Yeah, that was the, that was the draft draft, where anything got.
Is this over, and so they start with $75,000, this is in addition to that?
Mm-hmm.
Right.
And that's all, this year it only went over by $36,000? Okay.
Yep.
Yep.
Goodness.
So we'll vote to put this on? We, we recommend it?
Yeah, we recommend.
We recommend it.
Recommend to do it.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, Steve, it's your turn with your board.
All right. Do you get to approve this?
Are you always supporting the article regarding the snow and ice account as written?
Second. Prove.
Did you want that as written or amended?
As, I apologize, that should be as recommended, so should we re-vote on that?
I wouldn't think so.
No, I don't think so. Okay. And then the next ones are just, you know, articles that are on here every year, and then we always like vote, one vote here for Articles 4 through 10. And then the next one here, Article 11.
Or do you want to, do you want to just do the?
I'll make a motion to place the Articles 2 through 10.
Yeah.
As indicated in the draft warrant, to recommend it.
And recommend.
Or we want to go into 11, because that's a, that's basically, we do that every year also.
Those figures are correct, I checked it.
Hmm?
Those figures are still the same.
Yeah, so.
So it's 11, not 10?
Yeah, why don't we go, yeah, why don't we go 2, 2 through 11?
2 through 11, to, to both place and recommend the standard articles.
So that's your motion, I've seconded it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
I'd like to, do we have a motion to, to, to place the Articles 2 through 11 as, as, as written, very well. Second, all favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, then we'll move on to Article 12. This is to raise and appropriate the sum of, of a dollar, no, I won't even say, I'll say the sum of a dollar to plow private roads.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Your turn, Steve.
A motion to approve Article 12. All favor?
Aye.
And Article 13 is to raise and appropriate a sum of money to fund the road construction and reconstruction account, and that is something that is done every year. And I have a figure here of $35,000, if that is what we're, I don't know if that's.
So, motion, motion to approve this article?
Motion to approve.
To sponsor, yeah.
I'll, I'll second with a little discussion.
Okay.
I just want to remind everybody that the dollar amounts are a guideline, so if by the time we get to town meeting, we have a balance, or we have concerns about where we're sitting against our revenue, we can always adjust the amount, like if we want to bring it up to a certain amount because we have a specific project in mind.
Exactly.
We have that flexibility, so let's go ahead and leave this on so we can make that judgment in closer to the meeting.
So then, we'll, we'll talk later about, at another meeting, where we're going to get the funds for these different things.
Right, exactly. And I, and we'll have at least a few weeks of the accountant agency in here, and we may at least have a more clarity on what our current balances are in that account, but we might want to communicate to them that specifically, there's certain balances we want to understand that we have, and that may be one of them.
Okay, I will. Okay. Now it's 14, this is.
Should we vote that?
Oh, we'll want, yeah, we'll vote that.
So it's a motion to, to support.
Support. All in favor?
Aye. Steve?
Article 13, motion support. You have it. All favor? Aye.
Okay, the next one is Article 14, and this is to raise appropriate a sum of money to purchase protective clothing, air bottles for the fire department.
Motion to approve or support?
I'll second it to support, but I'd like just a tiny bit of discussion. Can we go ahead and, and I'd like to see the verbiage on this as well as on Article 13, and we might need to revisit it to, to use the full verbiage of raise appropriate transfer or borrow, so that if we choose to take that out of stabilization, depending at, on the funding levels that we're, we're planning on recommending, that the verbiage reflect that we have that option.
Yes.
Excellent.
Okay, motion, and so, any more discussion on this one?
Motion to support with the.
Amendment to 12 as well.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Steve, it's on to you.
Do I hear, motion to support as recommended, and as amended?
Yeah.
As amended, correct. You have it. You have it, good, all favor?
Aye.
Okay, Article 15. Now, is the advisory board, are they familiar with Article 15 from the, from the school?
Short answer is, you know, we, a couple of questions we have, who sponsored, what's the impact to the town, what's the maximum cost of improvement? You know, is this the amount of money actually necessary, so?
Yeah.
So.
I had talked to.
No, we weren't really familiar with this to answer your question.
Because Deb Boyd had sent out emails, right, Karen, back in January?
Did that get forwarded to these guys?
Yeah, I'm sure she did. I'm sure, because I've been in contact with them.
Well, actually, I don't know, I'm trying to think. I, I'm not sure, but I know you did get the article, oh, yes, you did get the email because I remember you requested it. I believe you requested it. The thing is, now we know it's approximately $1,000. We didn't know that back then. That was one of the questions I had.
Say again?
Now we know that it will cost Brookfield approximately $8,000, which I noted on this. Linda found that out from talking to Deb, that's new information.
And that's, and that's annually for how many years?
Just the one.
The one, I think. I thought she said, and she said the payment wouldn't start until FY 21, that's when we would see it.
Well, I understand that, but that, the payment not starting until 21 implies that it would be a multi-year commitment.
Well, she will be at, she will, they will be at the annual town meeting to explain more of this. Or if you want me to give her another call, I will.
That'd be great, or if you want me to call her, you will.
No, I'll call her, because I've been working with her on this.
Okay, great.
Okay?
Yeah, that'd be fabulous.
So this is, this is not a motion, an article to raise $2 million.
No, 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 the school is.
To raise $8,000.
The school is doing.
One time, Paul.
But we don't have to.
We believe that, I believe that.
Yeah, we're not doing, we're not raising this money at this meeting, what we are is just approving of the article, because like I said, it won't take effect until FY 21.
There is significant, we did have a discussion around this at, at the CIPC meeting, and the, and Hosterman was there. Her primary concern is both the safety and a heating issue, the condition of some of the doors, I got photos and stuff of exactly how bad it is currently. Bunch of them are rotted out pretty significantly, I guess the metal's just kind of deteriorating on, on all of the metal doors. And it is, I don't know that it's a safety hazard yet, but it's certainly an energy efficiency issue as well.
Is there cost, like savings or a cost offset or something like that? Do they talk about that?
There's a grant that they're getting.
Right.
It's a grant that they're getting.
Grant money.
Yeah, they're getting 56% of it, in essence, 55% of it paid for by the state.
I believe Steve's request for a, an offset was more, how much are you going to save per year in energy by that, it's like this.
Well, that, this is something you'll have to talk to Deb Boyd about.
And that's, I'm happy to talk to her about it, I, I will say that they're asking for authorization to borrow $2 million, saying that that's going to be paid off with a $18,000 payment, which is what I thought I already said.
That's what I said.
That was my understanding, too.
So I would like more information.
I'm pretty sure that's the annual.
Annual, but it can't be for very long.
Okay, so I will.
Fifth, no, seven.
Is it 10-year?
Is it 70?
Yeah, do you want to email her, I can give her a buzzer the way Karen?
I don't know, I don't know the term alone.
Okay.
I'll, I'll just straight up tell you, I don't know the term, I'm just.
I'll, I'll contact her tomorrow, and I'll, I'll send all the information directly in the email she sends.
Yeah, I mean, just, it's like most things, we're just, you know, if we have a clear explanation, we're, we're much better off than just verbiage like this.
And, and that's what we said, too, and she said that she would explain at the meeting, but I don't.
Yeah, that's what she said, she'd explain at the meeting, so people understood just what this was.
The town.
Yes, at the annual town meeting.
We should have the.
We should certainly have a part of that, if she's looking for support, so we look forward to Eric for having more information.
Okay, so I take the vote.
It sounds great conceptually, it's just the details, we're just.
Sure.
Yeah. So I asked a motion to support.
I have a motion to support, because we're going to fix some doors that are rotted.
Yeah.
I mean, let's get serious.
It's, it's a five-year borrowing request.
Oh, it is.
Okay.
So it's, it's a, it's a five-year commitment.
So 40,000 bucks.
So it's basically $40,000 over the course of five years.
Here it is.
So I'm sorry, I found the original email from May 7, and it, it states specifically, they will not know a true cost projection until May. They, they've submitted their article with the maximum figure of $2 million, but there's a likelihood it'll be between 1.5 and 2, so it may be as much as 25% less. But at the $2 million level, when you split out Brookfield's share, it's a, it's a five-year borrowing request, and for us, that five-year commitment is, is $8,000 a year in order to get the $2 million.
So effectively, that's a worst case.
That's a worst case.
At the most, and that's expected, and is that $8,000 predicated on any grant money coming in, or is it?
That's predicated, no, that's predicated on the 50, like 5.63% coverage.
55.
That's worst case project cost, but it's expecting the grant to.
Correct.
Mitigate the cost that fantastic was playing.
Yes.
Okay. All right, that's, that's helpful, thank you.
You're welcome.
So do we approve to put this on the warrant?
Absol, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Considered.
Do we, do we, do we, do we, based upon the, right? Is there some, is there some word that in the warrant that it says, you know, with the maximum of 40,000?
Five, eight, 8,000, eight, so, you know.
Well, you all control the, you all control the warrant book, so what we can do is, I can forward you this original email, send it to the two of you, and then if you needed any additional details for the text for the warrant book, you can add whatever you care to. If, like, you could probably send the verbiage over to Deb and ask her if it's an accurate representation, and then she can tell you for sure one way or the other. Does that work?
Sounds like a plan.
We might, yeah, that works.
Does it?
It, it does, because if new information comes up, we can raise it on the floor and, and make changes there if necessary.
Very well. So we have a motion to support the article, and, and should we be, say we, we will amend it if necessary?
Sure. Sure.
Sure.
And then, that's, do I hear what, I'll second your motion. All in favor of that?
Aye. And, uh, just so you know, just so you can indicate, um, if you're indicating support or non-support of the capital improvement, capital improvement did support that unanimously.
Okay. How about the one from the school? No, what other ones? Any other? Yeah, that's the other.
So your, your email.
I just sent it to you, I did it already, yes. Cause I'll forget if I don't do it right this second. Okay.
So now.
CIPC did fourteen, thirteen of, of one thousand.
Yeah, that's what I meant, do they approve of those also?
I think we're all up to seventeen now.
We are up to seventeen, and just also information.
Sixteen.
No, did.
Yeah, but did they support thirteen and fourteen?
We deleted sixteen.
CIPC, did they approve?
It was a different sixteen. So CIPC, so, so CIPC supported the road reconstruction if placed.
Okay, and how about.
That's what I was about to say.
And how about fourteen?
Uh, the, the air bottles, um, they supported that as well, though they did, um, they did ask that, if depending on the financial state that we scale the amount based on what's actually critical. Cause Kathy went over with us that she was working with Peter on that, and that a certain percent of them is absolutely required right now, but the, but that, um, we, we might be able to delay a portion of the purchase. So that would be a dollar value, we'd get closer into town meeting, but they did support having it on there.
Okay.
And they recommend, they recommend passing it, they just were open to.
Okay, so I'm gonna say they supported it.
Yeah.
Okay, now, Article sixteen, we'll have to make.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I thought that was the sixteen we were talking about.
And again, all these, that's a reason appropriate, we'll say transfer.
Yeah, that's what I was just gonna say, the amendment, we'll just have, that's what I was gonna state. Okay, this one is, um, it's from a state mandated emergency action plan for Sawmill Pond.
Yeah, we need to support.
And we need to support this because the mandate requires an emergency action plan, if you are reading along, for significant hazard dams, and Sawmill Pond is one. The emergency action plan must be completed by December twenty nineteen.
Motion to support.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion to support Article sixteen? Motion, all in favor?
When did we get that one in? When did we get that one in?
Oh, she, that one, that one came in, had in the holiday basis.
Yeah, almost in the first of it.
Yeah, that's been in since the beginning.
Alright, cause I don't see anything on it from the capital improvement.
Well, cause it's eight thousand dollars.
Two thousand.
Is that why?
Oh, that's possible, yep, that's why. Thank you.
And, um, the next one is put on by petition. It's, um, to put additional lighting throughout the town, with the location and types of these lights are determined by the selectmen, so we have to also put this on also. So I'd like a motion to put this on, but.
We put it on and, and I'd further take it that we would support, because back to, we may have, um, space in the numbers of lights that we have, and it may be the, a way to satisfy the petitioners as well as the town.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Do we know how many lights and recurring costs and will become part of the operating budget?
So, so recurring cost, average recurring cost for, um, most of our streetlights is anywhere from, from twelve to fifteen dollars a month, uh, per light. Uh, the installation cost, I don't know what the poles are, I know what replacement, the replacement costs are usually on the order of a few hundred dollars, but the, depends on, on what the, if there's any pole installation or what have you. So that would, I think the two thousand dollars is variable, it might get you anywhere from, from three to probably eight lights, depending on if it's long arm, short arm.
Right.
What, what LED, you know, if they're doing LED or conventional. Just went through, I think right before Herb Lefty did a replacement of a bunch of the streetlights with LED, but the, but the fixtures are more expensive.
Yep.
Um, so the, the short answer is that's why the petitioner is leaving it to the selectmen as to worry about the, the math of the placement.
Okay, that's, that was my next question.
Yeah.
Any other questions from our.
Do we have any information, I don't understand where these are going and what studies or what basis there is for the desire for these lights to be put in, it doesn't make sense. And I'll say, I've heard discussion about this, about, when we had a meeting, someone thought that it might be going into the section of Bill Street and this there road, and I would say I don't wanna light there personally, because at night.
You want the headlights to be able to see.
I want the headlights to tell me.
Yeah, that's right.
So it's like, is there a study about this? I don't wanna put it in because someone thinks it's a good idea when the science isn't.
So, 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 so here's the deal, we, it's a citizen's petition, so we have to include it.
Have to put it on, yes, we have to.
Now whether we support it or not, you are citing exactly the reason why I fought this when it was in as specific streetlights last year, and that was one of the specific lights.
It was the same thing last year.
Because, and, and, and my concern is, is they do have some studies that in rural areas, lighting like that, that's isolated lighting, that's not contiguous lighting, can actually cause rather than assist drivers from a safety perspective. So we don't have a study, some of this money might wind up going to the type of line of sight study that would determine whether or not, um, we should even go with putting a light in there. And if we have to do a study, it's, most of the money would wind up going to the study, but then you'd barely have money, any money left for even one light.
But then we'd know where the lights.
But then we would know what.
Sense to go.
Yeah.
There was a sense that it wants to go across the Murphy Bridge. That's, I believe what the, the intended petitioner would like.
Yeah, that's what I.
A question, based on the wording, if this motion passed on the floor as worded, is, do the selectmen and the highway department have discretion as to where the lights go?
Yes.
That's my understanding also, and therefore I would trust our elected and professional representatives to make sure that the placement is supported by science.
There we go.
Noted.
So.
And if not, I know where to find you.
So we have a motion to place.
Yes, a motion to place it on.
Right, and.
And to support.
Yes, we have, we have to support it, we have, yeah, we did, now it's.
So it's whether we recommend it or not, so I'll make a motion to recommend it.
Yeah, yeah, that, second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and now it's up to you guys.
Do I hear a motion to support Article four, what, seventeen?
Seventeen, seventeen.
To support so that it's on the board. Do I hear a motion, make a motion. Second motion. Second, all in favor? Aye.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bundle the next three, even though one of them is technically a, a capital improvement, but it's, it, all three of them are transferred from the ambulance fund. So I'll make a motion that we both place and recommend Article eighteen through twenty.
You have the second.
Do we have any discussion from anybody here? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Steve? I'd like to make, see if anyone would make the same motion to bundle Article eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, eight thousand as well.
Second.
Steph?
I think it's a great idea, let's do it.
I heard.
I don't want the bus breaking down on my way to the hospital.
Yeah, see, even though it's a transfer, it's CIPC.
Yeah, do they approve of these?
Uh, and we unanimously supported the ambulance.
Cause it comes from their, it comes from their, um, revenues anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, now, the next one, Article twenty-one and twenty-two, these are placeholders from the planning board. And I don't know if we want.
Well, motion to place.
Motion, yes, a motion to place these, these two on. You can ask Sharon, Sharon is right here, she's the chairman of the planning board.
No way.
I'll be right over.
Neither's a stop teller.
Yeah, still a naggle camera. Yeah? The order of these, um, to zoning bylaw amendments, which is what these are for, has not been determined yet, but they are in total, um, a zoning bylaw amendment to add solar, large-scale commercial solar arrays to the zoning bylaws specifically, with a set of recommendations and conditions that are required for any applicant for these types of installations. Um, this has been an outgrowth of some of the permits that we've had to approve, and a lot of the conditions that are going to be on them, and, um, the type of data that is required to be submitted for these permits, has been an outgrowth of the type of things we have asked applicants up till now, and the difference with this is it will, it will codify these requirements into the town bylaws, so that basically we're creating a level playing field, everybody will be required to submit the same information, everybody will be subject to the, excuse me, the same conditions, and the town will have in writing what the town wants from applicants, without having to come on an individual basis before the planning board, or to ask individual town departments and perhaps get different answers. Um, there are some provisions for not only the large scale, but placement of smaller arrays as well, and one of the things we have sought to do is to clear the decks for people who might wanna put smaller arrays in, so they make know exactly what's required of them as well. Where we are with that petition, as well as the next one, which is on regulating marijuana businesses, is we had our required public hearing last night, unfortunately, you know, it showed up, but we turned it into a working meeting where we, um, refined the final draft of the marijuana, um, bylaw draft. And what we're going to do now is submit both of those to town council, and I can also simultaneously submit that draft to the advisory board, with understanding that town council is going to weigh in as well. And that way you'll be able to read both drafts, if they're multiple pages, unfortunately, these things tend to run in excess of five or six pages. But that's the nature of the beast. Um, as far as the marijuana regulations go, this is basically a move to keep, um, to allow marijuana businesses within a certain area of town in what is known as an overlay district, which is a district that is overlaid atop of the current tax maps. And those businesses would be allowed to apply for permits within that overlay district. Um, there are some constraints rendered in that, because the town, in the statewide vote that they took about marijuana businesses in general, in legalizing marijuana, because this town voted in favor of it, we are not allowed to prohibit any marijuana businesses in town. Unless the town wanted to hold another townwide vote on that one subject. If the town felt strongly about, oh, we've changed our mind, we wanna prohibit marijuana businesses, that would be the way they would have to go about it. But as the vote stands now, and the town mid-vote to, along with the rest of the state, to allow marijuana businesses, we are not allowed to prohibit them. The provision that we have in the bylaws does allow a maximum of two separate businesses within that overlay district, and the scope and the scale of those businesses is described in the bylaw. Um, there are, there are also references made to the state laws and the state medical health laws. So there are two things happening here, one of them would be to regulate adult use recreational marijuana, and to allow for a maximum of two businesses in town. The second would be to bring this business, proposed type of business, in congruence with the existing bylaw for medical marijuana. We have basically proposing to combine the two bylaws, because there are different circumstances for both, and it would make sense to put it under one bylaw. So that is also laid out in the draft, and, um, it also, the references to all the state regulations there as well.
If I may, I do have just a couple of quick questions.
Sure.
Um, the first one is, is that we had a highly restrictive, um, distance on our, on our overlay or, or safe distance in our medical marijuana bylaw, would that be mitigated in any way by the overlay district as defined currently in the draft bylaw?
Just for the benefit of people who ever weren't here for that vote, when we enacted the medical marijuana bylaw, we instituted, as, um, we proposed a five-hundred-foot buffer between any type of church, school, playground, anything that had to do with the activities of children. That five-hundred feet would, a business would not be allowed within five-hundred feet of those entities. Much like liquor stores are not currently allowed within a certain distance of those same type of businesses. On the floor of the town meeting, an individual got up and gave an impassioned speech about children, and how he was against the legalization of any type of marijuana, I believe is how it was put, and he proposed, and the town voted, to expand that buffer zone to twenty-five hundred feet, rather than five hundred feet. In other words, a five-fold increase in the proposed state-recommended five-hundred-foot buffer zone. Unfortunately, this had the net effect of reducing the overlay district to one property on one part of South Maple. And we are indeed very fortunate that the attorney general, when reviewing this bylaw after it was voted in, did not accuse the town of trying to basically get by the prohibition of us prohibiting marijuana of any kind. Because if you enact a bylaw that effectively disallows almost all of the business in town, you are bypassing the law that says.
You're allowed.
Right. So if the same thing happens on the town floor again, again, we could be under the scrutiny of the AG, and the AG has been very, very meticulous, shall we say, in trying to keep towns from getting around this type of state law if the town had voted in favor of those type of businesses. And I can say this with confidence, because it took them approximately seven months to review the town vote on the moratorium on marijuana, seven months it took them. It was only approved, and this was the one that was approved last annual meeting, it was only approved last month. They wanted to make sure, and we had to provide evidence that we were working on a final bylaw, that we were having meetings, that we were doing everything the state said about mandatory, about bringing new bylaws before the town. They wanted evidence that we were actually working on this, and not just using it as a delaying tactic or a way to prevent these businesses from coming to town.
Did you answer the best question, or is it gonna be twenty-five hundred feet or five hundred?
I can't say that, if it comes from the floor, it will be up for a vote.
But it's recommended.
The recommended, the recommended distance was five hundred feet, and that is what we're going with, and it would.
Yeah, that's fine.
Right, and it would bring the medical marijuana buffer zones, as it were, back to five hundred.
Okay.
So that they would be a general protocol for adult recreational use and for medical.
Gotcha. And current, if it were that five hundred, it referred to an overlay district with two businesses within that overlay.
Or it has, would there be option for two businesses?
So in other words, the maximum amount of business regardless, let's say it's just the five hundred. Is two businesses.
That's correct, that's correct.
Because of the overlay, or because we just want two businesses in that stuff?
We would specify that a maximum of two businesses would be allowed in town, and that they would have to fall within the overlay district, and that overlay district would include a five-hundred-foot buffer around the types of, um, entities, church, school, playgrounds, et cetera, that I mentioned before.
So, motion to place and to recommend.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And if you wanna hold off on voting on this, I totally understand, and I can get you drafts tonight, now that we finally come up with the drafts that we're coming, that we're sending to town council, that's up to you.
Well, I, do I hear a motion to place?
I think we vote to place only, uh, the, uh, the planning board's bylaw changes on the watch.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Thank you.
Yeah, we're recommending.
Shall I send the drafts to you so you can distribute your list?
That'd be wonderful.
Okay, I'm happy to do.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I did have one other question, I'm so sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
What about, um, the agricultural aspect? Is, is that considered separately from the commercial endeavor?
We researched that, and the state, this, the state in its wisdom has exempted marijuana's from being, marijuana farms or businesses from being considered agricultural concerns.
Yep.
So if someone came into town and said, I wanna have a marijuana farm, and it's an agricultural activity, the state says, no, you cannot count it as an agricultural activity.
Thank you, very much.
Yep.
Moving on to Article twenty-three, this is another one, this, it's a citizen petition, and it's to add a new bylaw that would become chapter two, section twenty-two of the town's bylaws, and reads as follows, prior to setting the tax rate each year, the town of Brookfield must hold a town meeting for citizens to consider an article on the amount of free cash to be used to reduce the tax rate. I'd like a motion to place this on the.
A motion to place and not to recommend.
Second.
Because it takes the advisory board's.
Yeah, it does.
Hours away.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do I hear a motion to support the placement of this article? And do we, are we, are we voting to support it as well, recommend?
Let's separate those.
Okay. Motion to place. Second. Great. We were very split on this matter as far as supporting it. Motion to support the article, that's right. All, all, we have a motion, any, is there a second to support it? We do not have a second. So we do not support it, there is no, I'm not sure what that is.
Well, we could, we could, you could have somebody second and then put it down, that's your other option.
Is there a, or is there, is there a motion to not support it?
I mean, we not support it.
Second. Do we have a second? All in favor of not supporting?
Can we discuss it?
Can we say yes?
Yeah, okay. I just like to explain, I like the idea of considering using free cash for reducing the tax rate. I do not like how that idea is implemented in this proposed bylaw change, because the use of the free cash, we can use it to mitigate the tax rate, and we can use it to fund projects. This is effectively putting, giving tax, tax rate abatement first dibs at it in a special town meeting that is unlikely to be well-attended. I think that the consideration of the disposition of free cash, all the options should be considered at once. That has typically been at the annual town meeting, where we can decide, we know we have how much free cash we have, and we have these projects on the table, and we can decide which projects we fund and which projects we don't. I like the idea of doing it all at once and not dipping it up in a special town meeting that is unlikely to be. And that is why I think that this bylaw proposal is not something I can support, although I like, I, I think the objective is good, I think the implementation is flawed, and that's why I don't support it.
But you have a job as the finance or advisory board to in fact implement a recommendation, and we would look to that.
Which we can do from the floor.
Absolutely.
Yeah, sure. You don't have to do it tonight.
If we don't. Would anyone like to add anything to Mr. Reagan?
We just have one question, what is the tax rate set?
Usually.
December of each year.
Yeah, December.
Beginning of December.
Yeah, because the tax, because the tax, once you set the rate, the tax, and you know, they got all the bills going, you have to have it out. know, they got all the bills going, you have to have it out before December 31st.
So that would mean that we would need to have a special town meeting to discuss this, probably in December?
Well, probably like November.
Yeah, November, that's what we usually do.
Or the way that it, the way that it could roll, the way, and one of the other flawed things in the structure of this is that it depends on, on which free cash, right? So there are some towns that are on cadence that they have their free cash back prior to, that we would close our, say, 2019 books in July or August and already have free cash back in time for setting our tax rate in December but not spend it until the following year. Historically speaking, we haven't been filing for our free cash prior to the tax rate. So the free cash that we would apply to our tax rate would be the year prior's free cash. So it really would force an additional town meeting unless we applied it at the annual town meeting in June and already made that decision long before we had everything else set for the tax rate. It's just very much off cycle.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
As, there are a number of citizen petitions. Does the town clerk provide the moderator with a copy of those and the signature pages for each one?
No, you don't, no, I don't think, no, he doesn't provide.
Just the petition.
Just the petition.
Because it's...
No, no, it'll just be on the warrant. He won't give you the, he won't give you what he got, excuse me, he will not give you the original petition. You will just get it as it is written here.
Okay, so he is already certified?
Yes, he's already cert, yes, he's already certified these.
Does the person that submits it have to, have to make the presentation?
Yes. They have to make the presentation.
They have to read the motion.
Yeah, they have to, yeah, and they're the ones that does all the, I mean, you read it and then they make the motions and they tell why that they wanted this on.
They get to speak first.
They get to speak first.
And I could also tell you that the petition on the free cash was not supported by CIPC.
We have a motion second, all in favor. Do not support it. Not support it.
So is it unanimous?
No, no. It's going to be seven.
Six to one, right? Yeah, six to one, thank you.
Article 24, you're all done now with 23? Okay, Article 24 is another petition, a citizen position. It is to change the town bylaws to include a full-time position of town administrator. The town administrator will work directly under the administration and policy direction of the Board of Selectmen and oversee the daily operations of town government.
Motion to place.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And now we want a motion to support.
Well, I'll give the motion to support.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
No?
Okay. Good, that's good.
Do I hear a motion to support the placement of Article 24 for, for the town administrator?
You have the second.
All in favor of placing? Okay, so two, two stands and is it five? Five desks in favor of supporting it? Any motion to support?
I'll make a motion in favor of supporting it.
Second.
Second to discussion.
Discussion, go ahead.
I think that writing, I, again, good idea, I'm not a fan of the implementation. I think that before we write the bylaw, we should identify, we should understand what the town adminis, what this town administrator position would entail and better understand it before we go up and write a bylaw because I think we should, as a town, we should come to consensus on what this position would entail and whether we want to pursue it before we write bylaws for it. Which I feel we're putting the cart before the horse by writing the bylaws at this stage. I understand what they're trying to do, it makes some sense to me, but not yet.
Could I just say one thing? There was, probably quite a few years ago, there was a study...
2011.
2011, there was a study committee that was put together whether or not the town needed one and they felt at that time the town did not need a town administrator.
Not true. That's not accurate. The, the recommendation of the committee was that, that we needed one and it was the selectmen at the time that did not pursue it.
No.
Oh, I thought they didn't.
It was unanimous.
In 2011, they did support it?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought that they didn't support.
Yeah, I apologize, I didn't mean that, it's just, yeah.
No, I didn't, I didn't, I thought that they didn't support it. Ken?
Who made this study here? Who has this, who has?
This study, I don't even know who was...
The personnel board, actually it wasn't the personnel board, it was a special committee, I believe it was five members. They presented it to the selectmen and the chairman said, "We don't need this," and threw it away. And that was the end.
Who was, who was chairman then? Who was on the board back then?
The chairman was Steve Conover.
I'm looking for a copy, but I may have it in, like, I may have had it forwarded to me from somebody years, a couple of years ago.
We asked for copies of it and no one could find it.
Madam Chair, I have a hard copy if you'd like it.
You do? Yes, I would like a hard copy of Sharon if you have it.
We haven't saw the copy either, we were just told the study was done.
Yeah, we were just told the study was done and it didn't, you know, wasn't recommended.
It'd be worth it for us to get a copy because that's, I think, a fiscal, seems we are?
Yes.
Just to clarify, so I was the one that circulated the citizen petition recommending this bylaw change. The reason why I wrote it this way was to create the position in the bylaw, figuring that, not looking for money, not looking to fund it, and would work with a selectman to probably appoint somebody responsible to write a job description, which could be done prior to the annual spectrum of the farm.
I found it.
So that was, that was the rationale, to make a placeholder for the position, create the position. If it doesn't get funded, it doesn't, you don't end up with one.
Doesn't that seem like a lot of work for something that doesn't get funded or somehow?
I think it's ridiculous not to have an administrator. This is a $9 million business that's run part-time. That's my personal opinion, that's not, no offense to anybody.
Not hurting my feelings?
It is a $9 million, $8 million business, whatever the current budget is.
I found a soft copy of the report.
My only point, and I respectfully disagree, is that I, at certain points in time, I think you need to throw stuff out and just get it done rather than wait for everything to move along because if this was done in 2011, I mean, the information is there, so obviously someone has it, but at least we have something concrete in the bylaws. I mean, go back, form a committee, whatever, study the recommendations, we've got a whole new administration in hand and see where we go with it rather than delay another year, wait for the next town meeting and we're, you know, we're basically in almost the same situation.
The other thing that I will have to do is recuse myself from this in order, and so I'll have to ask Mike to act as the moderator while I present this, so I'm just, that's why I wanted to talk with Mike as well.
Yeah, he can, he can do that. Town clerk can present.
I've been looking, reading some of the information about moderators' duties and responsibilities. It did say that you could, you could step aside and...
Yes, that's true.
I got a question, Madam Chair.
Yes.
How is this, how is this extra expense to our town going to help our town have an administrator? A town manager dictates and runs the town and makes sure everybody's doing...
But this is administrator, it's not a manager.
A town manager is one who actually takes control and makes sure everybody's doing what they're supposed to do. This administrator is still going to be getting direction from you three. We, what, almost what Mrs. Train or Karen Train addressed, am I right? She's almost an administrator now for crying out loud.
Well, she...
She's an assistant, she's an assistant, but she don't have the title. But this town administrator is still going to be getting direction from you three. Am I correct or am I incorrect?
Oh, you are correct because that's how, that's how it's written.
So I mean, you guys want something done, you pass it on to Karen Train and then she delegates it and does it.
Yeah.
Why are we going to have a town administrator?
Well, maybe she should have Mr. Taff talk to that because...
She has no responsibility whatsoever for personnel management, which to my, to my way of thinking is probably one of the most critical things in town, is managing the personnel that are here, elected or hired or whatever. Karen is, is an assistant, she is not an administrator, she doesn't have that responsibility. A manager, yes, would oversee everything above and beyond the relegation of, of the Board of Selectmen. I don't think you can afford that, that position to start with. But I do think that an administrator will, will pay for himself, his or herself, in many ways. I mean, it's going to cost you money, yes, there's absolutely no doubt.
What do you, what do you project the cost would be with benefits, of course? Out of the budget, what do you think it's going to cost us for the town?
Any rent?
Not with benefits, no. We're going to get a college kid, now he's going to be here for three years and he's going to say, "That's why..."
That's kind of the, that's kind of what happens in any town.
Yeah, no, but not any town in Brookfield, we're trying to...
Okay, we're going to, we're going to...
And that would help.
Can we, can we stop?
Sure.
Okay, no more discussion because we have to move on on this. Was there any more questions? Did you vote on this yet?
We were, we had the discussion.
We were in our discussion phase of the voting to support.
Sort of expanded over there, but we're...
Okay.
The motion on the table is to not support, correct?
No, the motion was to support.
To support. Any more discussions? To support the article.
I think, I've been in town a long time and listening to the people at the town meeting and when you mentioned how much this is going to cost, a lot of them will probably get to walk out the door because they have no idea what it's all about and a lot of information needs to be brought up before we write a bylaw. When somebody says, and I know the town of Shrewsbury is like, "This is $125,000 for the town."
Yeah, Shrewsbury.
I know it's a big town.
Town of Charlton, just, there was an article in the paper about the town of Charlton and they were paying theirs $146,000 a year.
Oh, yeah.
And what they just told, like, what they do this and they say...
They want, yeah, they, they wanted to get rid of her so they reduced her salary to a dollar.
To a dollar to get rid of her, right.
And I know the town of Paxton...
After they $146,000.
Now, we, the town of Paxton, they're a little larger than we are and they have one up there and I think they pay, and they couldn't find one, they pay $100,000 and that's what the salary was and they said they couldn't find anybody that'd take the job for less than that.
What's Hardwick paying though? Because Hardwick's got one. They've got a part-time town administrator, I think they're paying like $65,000 for 2530 hourly.
But you're saying that's a part-time.
Yeah, but still...
We would want, we would probably hire a full-time, is that what you're talking? Or a part-time?
Well, the way it's phrased on this is, it does say full-time, but, but, you know, we have a lot of people that are, anything over 20 hours really is considered at least a regular employee and, and it's up to the town to fund it at whatever level that the town chooses to fund it, right? So...
Having the study back around to people so that they can read the study and understand what they're asking for. I mean, if I have two things that we need to have better connections with, there are human resources and interrelationships between the departments. Those are two things that are needed from my perspective.
And I don't think they would have control over elected officials.
No.
No, that's what Dawn had said that.
It's still going to answer to you.
You had mentioned that they would do the everyday things that go on and they would have power over the appointed, but they wouldn't have all the elected officials.
Right.
They don't have anything to do with them.
Right.
And if you wanted to do that, then you'd have to go write a whole town charter and whole work. And that's quite a project.
Motion to support or...
The motion to support is on the table, it's a question second.
Correct. All in favor of supporting the article? Aye. Say aye. All in favor, all not in favor? Okay, so, four, I'm going to say five, I'm not in support. Two, two, five.
That's why we're going to go beyond 9:30.
It's a worthy conversation.
It is, it is, absolutely. Absolutely.
It's a $1 plowing for dirt roads.
All right.
It'll be a good discussion.
Okay, the next one, we're moving on.
On the town administrator, let's see here. We did not have it on our agenda because I believe it has nothing to do with capital.
I know.
It's, it's a, it's a operating expense and it's personnel, so they, they did not weigh in.
But they weighed in on the one with the bylaw, Article 23 bylaw.
Which one? Which one was 23?
That's okay, never mind.
Okay. Okay, we're going to go on to Article 25.
Well, yeah, they did, they did on the bylaw because of the relationship to the free cash.
Okay, well, that?
Yep.
Move on to 25 and this is to, we had a similar thing, we had the same thing with the pilot agreement on this last year. It's for the solar and this one is for Eight Mitchell Hill Road.
Right, so motion to place and to support.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We were wondering, is this specific to Eight Mitchell and what about others?
No, this is just, every time you have one that comes in, you have to have a pilot agreement because we have a pilot agreement down at, what is it, 52 or 54 South, South Maple. Yeah, so each of them have a separate pilot agreement.
Yep.
And this is sponsored by the assessors department.
And has gone through legal and the rest.
Any more motions to support?
I'd like to know if this is the one that, now, this isn't Exterra, is this the one on the hill?
It's Exterra.
She missed out last time, she's part of the town meeting.
No, this is Texera's.
This is Texera's.
Second. All in favor? Anyone opposed?
No, this one was yours.
Yeah, we'll talk about it.
Yeah, you can present that if you want, 26.
So, 26 is basically where we have open space under chapter land, if the property were to be taken over by a solar farm or whatever, that any taxes that would be due or refunds to, to the town that would be due, that those funds would go into an account and again, the account would be established with zero money, but should there be a place like Mitchell Hill, that those monies go into an account to be used for open space purposes in the future rather than the general fund? So, okay, so I'm, I'm motion to place and support.
I'll second.
Yeah, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye. And again, this would be a perfect example where I explained the last time that we're looking to get an open space grant specific to the playground. This would be monies that could go to support the, the balance of what it costs. Park money grants are 70, 30 splits, so you, if you had 30% in your pocket, you could go do, do a lot more. So that's why you'd want to have it there.
What would be the method of proposing uses of that?
It'd be town, it was a town meeting.
Advisory, um, we're hearing a motion to support Article 26.
I'm moving to place and support Article 26.
We still have to...
Favor?
Aye.
27.
27. Okay, this, we did this last year. Now Beth, did the CIPC, did they...
They did support this.
They did support this.
Actually, remember Peter said that they would sponsor it actually.
Yes.
Originally was sponsored by the Treasury's office last year, but since Peter said...
Yeah, Peter said they would...
Yes.
So, motion to place and support.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Is, is this the correct number 51737? This is what was on...
Yes.
The one last year.
Last year was 71,000 something.
Yeah, it was, yeah, I think it was higher last year.
This is the figure, Linda, that you gave.
The number from last year was 51,000.
The Treasury's office.
Hold on a second. Lanny actually sent me an email validating the number. It might be less, hold on a second.
Because this is where we got this original figure was from the...
Yeah.
Yeah.
The one from last year, the amount was fifty-one, seven, thirty-seven, review of Article forty-seven of last containment town meeting.
So it was the same.
So it can't, maybe, maybe she.
Can't be the same.
No, I think, yeah, I think it was a different, she gave me a different number, I think. I think it might be like thirty or something. School refund, there we go. Um. Did she send you the number, because I asked you?
Take a look at this, please. This is an email, you know, March twenty-seventh, right here. To be refunded.
To be refunded, yeah, that was seventy-one for, this, is that for this year?
This is dated right there.
That's from Deb Boyd.
So this is from Deb Boyd.
Yeah.
I'll take seventy-one.
So it's what, it's seventy?
So what's, what's the real?
Yeah, what's the figure? Seventy-one thousand?
That's from Deb.
Looks like seventy-one six is what. Then that's better to get from Deb from the other side, it's like seventy-one bucks?
Seventy-one six.
Seventy-one thousand six hundred.
Yeah. Now, when did that email come through?
This is March twenty-seventh, two thousand nineteen, it's from Deb Boyd. It's, it was to Karen, so Karen, this is in your.
I sent it to you right, right.
Right.
Okay.
Excellent.
That's good.
Take the money and.
If you want, copy or something, so.
Okay.
Well.
That's good.
So we're admitting that to seven, one, six hundred, correct?
Right, that's, and that would be in the notes, anyway, so.
Yeah.
But let's.
Verify.
You want it, double check?
Well, no, what I, what I, what I would like to do is, is, let's send a note back to the Treasurer, have her reach out to Tanta Asper, and have them come up with the same number twice. Okay.
Okay.
Here.
That make sense? Let's get the same number twice.
Right. Advisory, motion to accept or to support Article twenty-seven.
Was the number to be the challenge?
Verify.
Right, the number to be verified by Tanta Asper, and the temperature.
You have a motion?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Got it.
Yep, in fact, Karen, you forwarded it to us on that day. Yeah, but see, what happened is, when we were putting this together, Linda had gone into the office next door and asked for the figure off the top of her head, and that's what we wrote.
And this is what they told us.
Yeah.
Got it.
Verify and move on.
Okay, Article twenty-eight. This is to establish a police cruiser replacement account, for allocating funds each year towards the placement of the police vehicles, and this is sponsored by the CIPC. Would you like to speak on this, Beth?
I do, even if we decided at this point to create the account and fund it at a dollar, what the CIPC would like to see is the creation of that account as a stabilization fund, and then, once we have our books reconciled, to fund it at a level this year for two cruisers, because we've been off cycle for some time, and then annually there, too, just go ahead and fund at a one cruiser level, but to have the money sitting there and not necessarily spend it until it's determined by the police chief and the Board of Selectmen that we actually have to replace the cruisers. So over time, we may get to the point where we get one ahead.
Okay.
But it will help us level load the expense, and not wind up with another year where we have to pay for two.
Yep, so motion to place and support.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
What sort of dollars are we talking?
So, this is voting the creation of the stabilization account. The intent would be, as part of the motion, we could, we could create and fund, or we could just choose to create and not fund at this meeting, and fund at a future meeting once we have, like, our free cash coming back and what have you.
Okay.
But the creation of a separate stabilization fund will, will set the expectation that we fund it as part of our capital planning process.
Very well. We're hearing motion to support Article twenty-eight, creating a stabilization fund for the police. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on. Twenty-nine. Okay, this is, this whole one is on the placement of the South Pond Bridge, and basically, I think our list is, is.
It's not going to cost the town any money.
No, money will, yeah.
Yeah, there's no acquisitions, because it's not, it's owned by DCR and Fish and Wildlife, so there's no, there's not going to be any imminent domain or anything, because there's no private property owners, so.
Doesn't this have something to do with, what do you call it?
NAST DOT told me there's no cost to the town on this.
Is this something to do with an easement?
Yes.
This is to do with an easement?
To replace him with South Pond Bridge, right.
So, so the town owns the parking lot right beside the bridge, so basically, when they do the work on the bridge, the DOT would utilize that area for stockpiling and equipment and so on and so forth. So they need a temporary easement.
Yeah.
And then, at the end of the project, they will restore that parking lot.
Yep, so.
No, no cost.
Motion to place and support.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Advisory, do I hear motions, place and support Article twenty-nine? All in favor? Second, yeah, good, all in favor?
Aye.
Against them?
I just, I, I'll need to understand it a little more, this is, this, we didn't read this previously.
Correct.
We did, I am chief.
Yeah.
Thirty, or so, do thirty, okay.
So, Article thirty relates to the South Pond Beach and Boat Ramp area, that we formed a committee last, at last, at the last meeting, of individuals that will take responsibility for the South Pond Beach and Boat Ramp area. What this does is, this.
Motion.
This, this allows that the town, by recommendation of the committee and the Board of Selectmen, would enter into agreements with both beach, with fisheries and wildlife related to the beach, and that we would go into an agreement with the Office of Boat Access. What this further provides is a provision for fees to be collected. So let me explain that. In the current budget that you have, you have about a thousand dollars in the rec department's budget that is funding the porta-potties for the fiscal year. What you also have, or what QQLA has, are provisions to pick up the trash and dispose of the trash. In the Board of Health's budget, you have seven hundred and fifty dollars for water testing. Those monies would stay in the budget for this year. What we have is, and what will be discussed at the committee's meeting tomorrow night, is to, a recommendation to beach access and to grant the boat access, so that we could decide what fees we would want to collect. In the case of discussion, what is for discussion, is that for beach use, the idea is, though this is not firm, because the committee has not discussed it or voted on it or anything, but the idea of collecting two dollars per family or individual to use the beach, with a provision to buy a season pass for twenty-five dollars, and that those monies be put into a fund, this would create that fund, this article would create this fund, where we then wean off town dollars, again, you've been paying about, well, if you add in QQLA, twenty-seven hundred dollars a year to maintain the beach, for others to be using the beach. What the fees offer is the opportunity to collect from other towns and other, other areas, to be able to offset what would be at least a two thousand or twenty-seven hundred dollar expense per year. What this also does is, where was I headed with that? I don't know where I was headed with that. So, oh.
Lifeguards.
Yeah, they want lif, thank you. They want lifeguards, they prefer lifeguards, this is fisheries and wildlife. If we were to do just some rudimentary lifeguard coverage, couple of lifeguards at eight hours a day kind of thing, four hour, two, two-four hour shifts, basically, you end up with seven or eight thousand dollars that you're going to come up with. So, rather than the town of Brookfield being obligated to come up with seven or eight thousand dollars, what we could do, and what we should be thinking about doing, is signing the agreement for a year, see what the fees that we collect are to offset the town's expenses, and what I would hope that we would do is have enough funds that would, we eventually, years out, not this year, that would be, we would be able to fund lifeguards and/or attendant support or the like. As far as the fees, we can charge fees for the launching, the average, I shouldn't say the average, the range of value for boat launches, similar to what we have, is between five and eight dollars per use. Again, we, what has been discussed is the idea of a five dollar fee per single use, or twenty-five dollars, again, for a year's use, would be the boat, boat ramp, and again, if you think about the kinds of derbies that we have and whatnot, we basically pay off the porta-potty with those funds from the calculations we've had. As far as the beach fee, it's really going to be a year worth of finding out what we'll really have as far as the population of people, so we can determine what we can and can't do. But again, what I'm, what I'm, what I'm proposing, or have proposed, and I look forward to the committee making a formal decision, and back to the Board of Selectmen, is that we do this for a year, that's what we've, the term for the contract is one year, so we see where we are a year from now, but again, it goes, the idea of the town, and again, in the town, I refer to QQLA and their expense that they've put up, to wean off the twenty-seven hundred dollars that's come from the town of Brookfield, to make it a more regional effort of people paying off the expenses for the beach.
Just a quick question, Clarence, does the agreement signed with the fishery, did they require lifeguards for us to?
It, no, and we, we would maintain the same language that says, essentially, it says that, in essence, they prefer it, but they can't.
If we're accepting fees, are we obliged to have these things this year?
Oh, you can close the beach, I mean, you can absolutely.
But if we're taking fees, if we're two bucks a person or whatever else?
Yeah.
Is a person paying two dollars under the expectation that there will be a lifeguard there?
Oh, no, 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 the, the, yeah, no, we have not supplied a lifeguard. If we were to supply a lifeguard, your budget would have to increase by eight thousand dollars, basically.
Sure, but charging, correct?
Yeah, but what we're saying is, there's a sign as you walk at the door that says, you know, no lifeguards, you're冒着 your own risk.
Give me two bucks, you still have no lifeguard.
No, if you give two bucks, you still don't have a lifeguard.
But you do have empty trash cans at a porta-potty.
Yes.
Yep.
You're paying two dollars for empty trash cans at a porta-potty.
Done.
Right, so, I mean, the plan would be, if you collect enough money, then next year, maybe you get lifeguards or something, depending on how many fees, something like that?
My expectation, at least next year, the town of Brookfield doesn't pay twenty-seven hundred bucks, and again, I say, QQLA's kicking in a thousand bucks of that twenty-seven hundred, the town of Brookfield's not going to pay the whole bill. What we have is the opportunity to collect from others.
Right, right, right.
And again, I think that that's fair to the town, that the town pay a portion, but the town not pay everything. And again, the contract is written such that any funds that are collected must go to the maintenance of the beach and boat ramp. We can't put it in the general fund.
Right.
I have a question.
Yep.
If we are, if the plan entails collection of fees, who will collect the fees?
The committee.
So maybe we're possible for putting someone there in the summer and saying, two dollars please?
No, what it's going to be, Tom, is that Boat Access has access to these volunteer boxes, basically with envelopes, so you're going to collect from a box. And, and the other, back to managing it, that the box will have envelopes, you tear off the tab and you put it on your dashboard that you paid the two bucks. And again, the committee is, will be responsible for some level of scrutiny.
Okay, and it sounds like this is being implemented as a trial or pilot program, and we see how it works this year, and then it's a one-year agreement, and we decide how we want to proceed based on the data we collect this year.
Exactly.
Okay, that's, I understand the appeal of that.
See where it goes. Otherwise, the beach gets closed.
How does that work with the State Fines Act beach?
That's correct.
And we can take, we can still collect money on top of that?
Yep, in fact, they're recommending it, because they want the lifeguards.
So someone who pays a fishing license every year, and goes down there and fishes.
Can't charge them.
Okay.
Sure, sure, sure fishermen cannot be charged.
Okay, that was a statement, okay. So, you're going to try to blame the public, if I want to go down and have a swim, I'm going to have to pay two bucks just to go have a swim? You're going to blame me for lousy two, three dollars?
Well, see what happens.
I think that's pretty sad in little town of Brookfield.
Yep, good. Thank you.
Pretty sad.
Yep.
Okay.
So we've got the votes from both of us.
So I've got, I've got a motion to place and support.
I'll, I'll second it. Yeah, we already did.
Yep, so.
You're all set.
Oh, we're all set.
We're all set.
We're all set, now it's.
Advisory.
Advisory.
Do I hear a motion from advisory to place and support this Article thirty?
You guys want to move?
Second. Very well, all in favor?
Aye.
You're abstaining, okay. Who's in favor? Okay, so we got five, five. Yeah, I'm, I'm abstaining as well, so there's five.
Okay.
Okay.
Moving on.
Then Article thirty-one, thank you for putting the placeholder, Karen. The motion would read, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer or borrow a sum of money to continue the lease of eighteen Common Street, Brookfield, Massachusetts.
Motion to support, place and support.
Police, nothing's been done, any articles?
Well, so there are some money articles.
Some money articles.
And we were told to limit it to as, as, as the minimal amount that we could for continuance of, like, normal business operations. So the lease is in place, we have the option to continue it for a year, the original intent of the border, of the library trustees was to go for the purchase of the property, because of the fact that we are in the situation that we are, and we don't have reconciled books, the library trustees has backed off of that position, and they're, they're putting it on as strictly a continuation of the lease, and we have had discussions with the Hellers, and I need to reach out to town council, because they have offered to, if we come back around in the fall and want to do a purchase, then anything remaining of the lease funds will get applied directly to the purchase price, so it's not, it's not necessarily money sunk if the town decides to make the decision to purchase the property later on, so.
The town, why, the town trustees, you going to kick somebody in?
So the trustees don't have a separate budget, other than the library operating budget that they receive from the town, the friends of the library are not kicking in, because.
That's a nice question.
Yeah, so the friends are asking that the town assume the burden of the lease, specifically because they had been positioned to go ahead and go do the purchase.
They had funds, they had funds for the previous year.
Right, for, for.
And that came from the friends.
Right, so they're asking that we fund it as a town at the sixteen thousand five hundred dollars, which would be the full year lease at the reduced rate for paying the year in advance, but then any, if we do choose to purchase during this second period of the lease, any months of rent that has not been consumed will be applied directly to the purchase price.
What was the total amount for the house?
Sixteen thousand five hundred.
Oh, the total?
Oh, total amount? That is also going to be the amendment that we need to get town council to write up. The original agreement between the town and, and the property owners was that it would be two hundred thirty-nine thousand if we purchased it prior to starting the second if we purchased it, uh, prior to starting the second year of the lease, and it would be two forty-nine if it was any time during the second year of the lease. Um, they're, they are also going to prorate that by month if we choose to execute prior to the end of the second year.
Is the lease moving towards the purchase?
Yes.
Yes.
And, so, the decision has been made to do this, correct? Purchase this house for the library's?
So, the town meeting still has to make the decision to purchase, okay? Which is the reason why they are asking to do the lease, um, where, um, just they didn't feel comfortable where all the other larger money articles were coming off from a standpoint of things like the fire truck, and we're not gonna necessarily fund the cruisers, um.
Last year, there was a lot of due diligence that had not been done. Is that underway? Do we have that information? Roof and?
Yeah, so the roof has already been replaced. I mean, roof has been replaced. There's an inspection that has been done, but, but predominantly, this, we're not necessarily buying the property for the premises. We're pri- buying the property for, or, or making the proposal to buy the property for the future options relative to the building, whether it's an expansion, whether it's, um, the ability to, to place a septic. There's a, a significant, uh, uh, layout related to, uh, homing all of the historical documents that we have in town, including stuff that's currently inaccessible and tucked in corners of the town hall. Uh, the historical committee is also involved in this and has plans to, um, place a number of collections, um, within the confines of the property as it's, as it's laid out and make those available to the public. Um, there's also, um, once the historical committee has a location, there are a number of private collections in town or, that, uh, may be coming to them, uh, in order to retain some of that, that, those historical materials that currently there's, there's no location for. So, at this point, it's, it's somewhat morphed into a, a joint activity between, uh, the library trustees and the historical committee.
Do we know what percentage the, uh, friends of the museum or the library will, will put up for the purchase price? I remember that from last year.
Um, the, at the time, there's, there's, there's no, um, commitment from the friends relative to the purchase price.
Well, I thought you said there was.
Last year, there was. They had donations.
Last year, the friends paid half of the annual.
Yeah.
So, they eight thousand or?
Eighteen, two fifty or something like that.
Correct.
Is that what it was?
But there will be some out there, right, or?
So, the friends are committing to improvements upon acquisition of the property, not funding towards the acquisition of the property?
Do we know how much they, um, committed to, uh? If we're, if we're going to buy it, how much have they put into it, and what's it going to look like is what I would like to better understand.
So, the, we had a specific vote around it from the capital improvement committee perspective of how much we were gonna limit any investment in the property post-acquisition, but, um.
I don't remember what it was at this point.
I don't have that meeting's votes with me.
Was something aggressive on the floor of either one of the meetings?
They'll have to.
Yes.
October?
Yes. So, they'll have, uh, and because they're not going for the acquisition of the property, I don't have all of the acquisition details, to be frank with you. I didn't, I didn't re-review the details with them about the acquisition because they were moving off the acquisition stance based on the fact that, that the town needs to reconcile the books.
What? I mean, I guess, I just, I, excuse me, I just was, was, I mean, I remember what happened last year. It was very disorganized and confused, and it was almost a little, this was such a large purchase for someone who's representing the library to make a presentation, maybe the town meeting, saying sort of pre-voting, that this is what we're gonna do, show pictures with a PowerPoint.
Understood.
Um, it's a big, it's a big number.
Absolutely. Right, and which is one of the reasons why, given that we don't have free cash and we don't have our books reconciled, that they're not pursuing the purchase for the annual town meeting. But to your point.
I'm just, I'm just saying, is it like pre, pre-planned?
A lot of, there's been a lot of pre-work that has gone on to the, to the planning of, of that at this point, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Do we know how old houses?
Do I know off the top of my head? Do they have that information yet? They have the full history? They do. They have a complete house inspection. Uh, so.
I know the septic system in libraries is, is testable.
Correct, okay. Right, so, the, one of the reasons for this acquisition is to, is to provide appropriate room for septic system and potential future library, uh, expansion, okay? If we had purchased the property to the north of the building, uh, several years ago when it came up, we would've gotten it for basically less than half the money. So, I understand everybody wincing at the price tag, but when you wait fifteen or twenty years to acquire the neighboring property, unfortunately, real estate continues to go up, okay? So, at the end of the day, if we are ever gonna go outside the confines of the library walls right now, um, even if we choose not to pursue the type of mausoleum that the Massachusetts Library Association requires, okay? Uh, we, we are, it requires some amount of space in order to, um, in order to do that, okay? Um, this would provide us options to where we can have a Brookfield solution at our own pace and cadence, um, similar to when we acquired the Proudie property and eventually built the police station, but that was years in, in the making. This would at least put us in a position to have the option to do whatever expansion in place that, that we needed or wanted to do, even just from a standpoint of, of appropriate septic replacement, so.
I know Westbrookville, when they added up to their library, they got a lot of state money, but like, it was over three million dollars just to add that piece in back.
Correct, right, and, and if you, and if you take the state money for the expansion, you have to meet all of the requirements for a library building, which is what made it a, I don't think it was a three million dollar. I think it was closer to an eight million dollar project, and the town paid half. So, it's like a four million dollar project.
I remember talking to, uh, Mrs. J, all his over there, and she was saying about how, people, how it happened. Well, the state kept in a lot of dough, so.
Right, but at, at the, at the end of the day, to do any of those options, whether we went with state money or whether we just went ahead and, and enhanced what's there, okay, then, then that, either way, um, in order to preserve our options and let the town make a rational decision when we have our free cash and our books settled and what have you, um, that's why we, we were gonna be support, that's why the CIPC was supporting allowing a continuation of lease, okay? And then, we can make the decision about the purchase of the property, um, in the fall, along with our other major finances.
I don't think it'll be.
What are we getting for fourteen hundred dollars a month right now? I'd like to know what we're getting as a town, as a library.
Okay, it's eight thirty, and quite frankly, I'd prefer to move on.
Yeah, I'd like to.
We can talk about that at the time.
I'd like to move on, too.
Don't wanna answer that, that question, huh? Too confidential?
Oh, no, I'm actually, uh.
Too confidential?
No, it's not too confidential. Currently, currently what they have is the historic collections over there, and, and they're making a number of the, the maps and things that have been stored up in kinda like the eve space of the library available to, to anybody that's looking to do that research. There's also been some significant traffic through that building for a number of different committee meetings. They've been using it as, as meeting space, and, and they've held some activities over there as well.
Yeah, historical issues, yeah.
Yep.
I have a question, and it should be quick. If the free ca- if we knew our free cash position and we had to handle all the town finances, would we be voting on whether to buy the property or not? Do you feel that we have the information?
Yes.
I'd like to ask a follow-up question. Has anyone not invested in wanting the library to make this acquisition, looked at this with the, um, with the idea of the, representing the town's interest, not just the library's interest? Has a disinterested party looked at this? Someone, it's like, 'cause my thought is, the library has been pushing this, and they, they want, so to me, they're not disinterested. They wanna put this in as positive light as possible. So, have we, if this is, we're looking at allocating sixteen thousand dollars. Whether we buy it or not, that's sixteen thousand dollars that are going, that, that are coming off our budget. If we go forward with the project, some of it's going to go to the purchase price. But basically, it's a sixteen thousand dollar expense. We're not getting any of that money back if we decide to walk away two months in.
That's correct.
So, now, I, so my question is, if we feel that we're in the position to, to, that we could buy it if we had the finances available, where's justification? Where's someone said, yes, the purchase price makes sense, and we've done the analysis. It's a, based on the condition of the building, and that's a fair price, and we've looked at it, it's in good condition, and it is suitable for the int- the planned use over the next couple of years? I like the people at the library, but they want this to happen, and I would feel much better if this is just for them.
So, here's, so here's, so here's the problem with, with the approach that you're talking about, Tom, is that, again, it's not the building in its current state that we're purchasing, okay? It's, it really has to do with the options, future state, whether it's to handle the septic, whether it's, whether it's expansion of the library. From a standpoint of, of sheer, they have a copy of the inspection prior to the original, um, um.
Lease.
Entry into the lease, they went ahead and did replacement of the, the roofing in order to maintain the integrity of the building. Uh, the overall inspection, um, it's, it's a publicly available document. I can ask the library to put together a package. If, if you try to do a dollar-for-dollar analysis, though, I'll, I'll tell you today that it's, it's a little bit high per square foot if we were doing like a, a private, uh, house acquisition for that particular property with that particular inspection. You could probably negotiate it down some percentage, not a huge amount, quite frankly, with the current market, okay? Um, but that's not what you're buying. You're not actually buying that building. What you're buying is the, is the option for the town to make a future decision about what we want from a standpoint of, of, of options for, for expansion and service to the town from a standpoint of library and the historical committee, okay? If you, if you wanna try to justify it today, against that building specifically with the penny-for-penny, what it's gonna give us in the next year or two is probably not the best financial case in the world, okay? What, what the financial case is for is what we already sacrificed once because we, we sat on our hands when an adjacent property to that library came up for sale, and because of the same type of debate prior, even to the town meeting, that they were gonna decide whether to purchase it or not, the private buyer went ahead and, and purchased the property. And in doing that, we lost our opportunity to do things like handle the septic and expand the building according to the plan that, that we spent thousands of dollars of town money already developing from a standpoint of library expansion opportunities. So, you know what? Absolutely, we can put a package together, it'll have the inspection, you can make your own decision. The historical committee has some great information of exactly what layout they're gonna be doing, how they're gonna be able to process materials for the town, and what that future benefit is. But is our history quantifiable? Can you put a, can you put a value on, on some of the collections that we'll be able to bring in? Because people, citizens within the town know that there's actually a place where it would reside with the historical committee. I don't know that I can put a price tag on that for you today, and I don't know that we can even get a quantifiable analysis for you. But what I can tell you is that it really should be up to the townspeople to be able to decide that with both the quantifiable and the non-quantifiable in front of it. But what I, one thing I wanna do is get away from framing up this question as to, is that house worth it penny-for-penny, square foot for square foot? 'Cause it doesn't all have to do with the house or the square footage. It has to do with the options for the town and for the citizens to be able to make a longer-term decision about what they want from a standpoint of library services. And quite frankly, they have a fairly, uh, solid representation behind them because of the level of usage that that little library sees. Their circulation, their, their wheel count going through that library is much higher than some of those giant mausoleum libraries that people have spent millions of dollars to put in. They're asking to spend two hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars to have options, and they're already spending less on building, uh, overall expenses by a large amount than many of the communities that have half their circulation, okay? So, I, I think that's part of the whole case, but I'm not gonna try to defend whether or not the, the fact that there's some sag in the sill somewhere along in the, in the inspection, whether or not it's a, a good decision. Decision has to do with the property in the, in terms of options and not in terms of the, the, the structure that's standing today.
Excuse me, has, has the, um, Board of Selectmen supported this, voted to support?
Yeah, we're gonna get to the floor, so we're gonna support it.
Yeah, we wanna get to the floor.
We're gonna get to the floor.
Very well. Uh, do I hear a motion to support Article 31?
We don't even know if it'll go on in the floor, 'cause we don't.
Second, all in favor?
Not, not everything's gonna be finished on the floor.
Well, then we just have to keep.
Six, one, yep, thank you.
So, that completes that, and I had a question, so that completes all the articles. I have a question. Steve, I had talked to you the other day, and Beth, we talked last week about it, as doing our operating budget, um, as usual, you know, giving, um, raises to the employees and letting, instead of level funding it, letting them all have what they, you know, proposals that they needed for their different departments if it was higher. If you had that done for me, because Eric Kershaf there, we, the accountant, Eric would like to see that.
We, we're, we're very close. I mean, we've got almost all their, um, we've got a couple that have not provided us with, um.
But do you have, like, a rough one that he could look at it?
Yeah, it could be.
Yeah, sure.
Do you have one? Steve, who had?
We have, we have, I'll, I'll get it to you, but I, I can email it to you.
Yeah, can, e- email it, you have my home address because my town one isn't working.
Yeah.
You got the one at home.
May the chairman, has the Board of Selectmen, uh, to make a, a kind, some kind of a statement at the beginning of?
Yeah, I'm sure we will.
Explaining the situation?
Yes, we did, we've done that before, and I'm sure we'll do it, yeah. Yeah, we will.
Thank you.
So, so you have a copy that I can?
This is, I'm gonna suggest that, Tom, plug in a couple more numbers and then get it to you.
Okay, if you can get it to me as soon as possible, I'd appreciate it.
What I'm, what we're gonna plug in are numbers that we don't have. We're just gonna carry them over.
Yeah, we'll send anybody to get your budget.
And so, now, this is one that isn't leveled.
By the way, we're gonna need, like, numbers we do not have include, like, you know, uh, uh, retirement fund, unemployment insurance, various things like that.
The treasurer hasn't provided that?
We haven't, we do not. All we have is one line.
They haven't called her in yet. She does, she is coming in to see them.
We have asked, okay? Um, we have one line, group health and life insurance.
Why don't we put that down?
And also, just a point, too, is the general insurance, which was in the Board of Selectmen's budget, went back to the treasurer's office. They're aware of that because I spoke to Lonnie and her consultant. It's gonna be level funded at one forty-five. If you wanna use that number for that, I can give you that right now, a hundred and forty-five thousand. And that's as per our insurance agent. I did give them that information.
General insurance was on?
General insurance was on.
You're saying the money's a bit?
Well, it had been on my budget, and then Carrie switched it over to, uh, to the treasurer because she said that's where it belongs. She said it never should've been in the Board of Selectmen's budget, which does make sense. But at any rate, it's one forty-five level funded if you need that figure.
That's not a level fund number, but, um.
Um, that was, well, that's what we had, didn't, isn't it for general insurance? I believe that's what we had for last year. I don't have it in front of me.
What other ones did he say we needed? What? He doesn't have one. I'm gonna have to ask him, and we can get him for him so that they can plug them in.
You can ask him tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah, 'cause we, we should be, on June fourth, we.
Got it.
Is that right?
That's correct number, yes.
Okay.
It was a correct number.
Yeah.
While I have you here, are we, is the Board, can I ask, is the Board of Selectmen all set? Because we did get the breakdown of the legal funds that you requested from, uh, Michelle. I did email them over to you.
I, I received it, and I know I distributed it to everyone.
So, are we all set, or do we have to come back in and see you again? 'Cause I think that was your only question, was the breakdown.
Yeah, no, we, we, we approved the breakdown.
Okay, good, all right.
Improvement, I don't know, two weeks ago.
Now, what other numbers now do you need from, um, you said from the accountant, not the accountant, the secretary, treasurer?
Um, which is kind of retirement.
Okay.
Unemployment insurance, Medicare, the town share. General insurance, which we just received at a hundred and forty-five thousand.
Okay.
Steve, also the debt and interest payments.
Debt and interest payments.
Okay, debt.
Speak up, anything else?
I.
Thank you.
I, have we, hold on, I check my status. I don't think we, Steve, the. I'm showing you the treasurer's budget. We received a request, but I, I don't.
She said, I had talked to her, I talked to her about it today, and. She said, I had talked to her, I talked to her about it today and she said she had emailed you.
Yes, that's, that's consistent, we, we have received it, I couldn't find any reflection of us voting on it.
We did not, we reviewed it last week and we, we...
So you have the numbers.
We have numbers.
Oh, so you don't, you don't need me to go get these numbers from her tomorrow then?
We have numbers for the treasurer's budget, we do not have numbers for the insurance and debt and interest.
Okay, we will, we'll tell her tomorrow and we will get those to you.
So we can plug those numbers in.
Okay.
Yeah, but we did receive a bunch of requests.
Okay.
And then it was clear.
I was told earlier that we did not have numbers.
Yeah.
In both cases now I've learned that we've had numbers, they may not have been voted or they may not be understood, but that, in fact, the treasurer did in fact try to do her job. She attempted to do her job.
Yeah.
The insinuation was that she had not done her job.
And she is doing her job.
Attempting to.
We received, yeah, but I, I thought I could clear it all along.
It's eight-thirty.
Um, you know, there, there's a few others, you know, um, I don't know, you know, police station expenses, I don't know why we don't have that, I know that we approved, I'm, I'm looking at, okay? But we'll, we'll fill this out and get it to you.
Okay, as soon, as soon as you can, I'd appreciate it. And now, we want to set a time to meet with them again to do the recommendations for money.
June fourth.
June fourth.
All in or you don't get anything?
Yeah, we need everything in.
You're asking us something?
Yeah, we want, what we want to do is we want to set another, another joint meeting for June fourth, so that we know just what we need for monies for the different articles.
Well, and you also have the recommendation for finance from the accounting office.
Yeah, he'll give it, he'll have it back for us all, so. Probably I should even send him the articles.
We have the police station, everything else is paid for. The only debt we have is the police station.
Yeah, that's all we have is the police station.
Well, no, we also have Sommel, Dan.
Yes, Sommel, Pon.
There's a small, there's a small debt, uh, the only debt exclusion that we have is the police station, there's also the Sommel, Dan, Pon.
So we're being asked to join the board of selectmen on June fourth, which is a Sunday night, right?
No, it's a Tuesday, that's a joke.
It's a Tuesday. Is that a regular scheduled meeting, June fourth?
We're, we're even, Steve.
Two weeks from tonight.
Two weeks from tonight, yeah, two, two weeks from tonight, so we've got, I need that budget before then, beforehand.
Right.
June fourth, I will post it and, uh, we'll be here, uh...
Do we want to put that the first thing on the agenda?
Absolutely.
We want to put that for six-thirty.
Absolutely.
We'll be here at six-thirty.
Bell's on.
And, um, and you need, you need the budget, you're, you're gonna get a, a budget with the numbers filled in, maybe not finalized.
Yeah, but, because he, it's pretty close, he wants to see it to let us know what he recommends.
Right. Uh, the two and a half percent that you had recommended were essentially a cola on all wage lines, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Tom, on the two and a half percent? Two and a half percent is a cola on all wage lines?
Yes, that was, I, I, that's what I, I just requested, it's just the matter of...
Was that, was that in agreement with you?
Tease it out of the spreadsheet that we have.
Got it.
So it's, it should be twenty-four, twenty-five thousand, something like that.
That's usually what it runs about.
Yeah.
Roughly. Yeah, he's telling. Yeah.
It did last year.
Thank you. Anything else?
Does that include the, um...
It does not include the Collins Center, so...
No, won't include that, no.
So the, the original plan was to go with Collins Center or two and a half, whichever was larger, but because of the noise that we have on the financials, we're just going with the two and a half and we're gonna have to address the Collins Center activity.
Probably in the fall.
The longevity, uh...
That is probably gonna be on in the fall.
It's gonna be on the fall meeting as well.
That'd be fine.
Yeah.
Meeting with Enst, up at the, the Exteris Found and Missing Road, the fellow from Enst was there and he said there's a couple more people that are interested in stolen homes. With what they have on the top of Mitchell Road, that's one, and then Golden Road, which is in the actual area, and they have trouble to be able to put a transfer station on one forty-eight even before in February or after the two million dollars. Now they have enough people requesting, they have, uh, when they're gonna put this transfer station up to them. So I, I got a phone call from Connecticut and wanted to know where to, if I could send them a map or not, if you want, what are you looking for? One, one was marijuana, you know, and, uh, several products, it's not as good, we don't have any room, we're all, I'm ready.
Okay, do we want to move on to anything else under other from either one of you? Okay, why don't we...
Oh, yeah, okay, so let me just double check. Okay, so, yes, I do, I do want to talk. Um, so, uh, I, I went to a meeting with, uh, Mass Wildlife Ecological Restoration folks again, um, they're looking to do a, putting on Long Hill Road eleven acres back into grass, and then they're gonna be over a number of years putting a hundred and eighty acres into forestry program. So there's going to be quite a, quite a lot of activity up on Long Hill Road that I just wanted to pass on.
Okay.
That's, that's good for me.
Okay, now we're gonna go under correspondence, okay? Uh, the Department of Telecommunications and the Cable Department will hold a public hearing, um, to investigate the proposed basic service tier program equipment and installation